Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, April 17th. And I will note for the record that all three Commissioners are present in the Net U-Hill Room. We'll begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Next up, we have our department updates. First, we have the Health Department. Ms. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning. So COVID activity remains low in Monroe County. We have further decreases in wastewater concentrations since April 9. Flu activity is at minimal levels. The department has another community conversation scheduled on April 22nd from 1:00 to 2:15 PM at the Bloomington Housing Authority. This is to gather information for our community health assessment. And as always, we have vaccines available through our public health clinic at 812-353-3244.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right. Next, we have Corey Grass, Transitions, Jail Transition Team from the Sheriff's Department. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you guys?
They're good.
I put together a very, very basic PowerPoint presentation for you guys real quick today, just kind of give you a synopsis of what we've done the last few months. You guys have been a part of a lot of it, so it probably won't be shocking to you to see some of the stuff. Probably good for the public, though, to see all the places we've been, people we've talked to, and kind of the process we're going through. If you could go to the next slide, please. The tours we've gone on vary from other... skip over one. Yeah. The first place we visited was down in DuBois County. It's a much smaller facility that we're going to build here most likely, but it was a good way for us to learn about the process, some of the hardships they learned along the way, that they would go back and change. Again, smaller than ours, about 70 inmates now with 140 beds, but they also talked about the fact that after they were done building, they realized they should have built some infrastructure for future growth, that they'll have to go back and start all over again down the road. So just little life lessons like that. The sheriff was very accommodating. They're going to reuse the current sheriff's department for emergency management, and the sheriff's department when the jail has not moved out. So again, that was kind of the way we kicked off a very small facility. Next slide, please. I think you've all been to Franklin County. It's probably changed since you were there last time because they had some more progress, but kind of the Taj Mahal of jails right now, it seems like, of facilities, the way it was done from the facade outside. It's obviously substantially bigger than we're going to build, I would assume. That's not my decision big, but I assume we're not going anywhere near these kind of numbers or prices. But again, the passion these people had, the way they traveled, the way they met, the consulting they did, the thoughts, the way they thought things through. If you go to the next slide, please. Again, my presentation is very rudimentary, but here's kind of a quick side-by-side comparison of the picture on the left of our facility is the way that David Gardner is able to keep us afloat with his ingenuity and, I jokingly always say, paper clips and bubble gum. He's kind of doing the same thing with our water management and things that I'd brought up in the past. And in Franklin County, Ohio, the way they're doing it was color coding. When David gets in our facility to get down and try and work on these things, it's a little low chase. He has to get down inside below waist level. And again, he's got Sharpie markers and red cords. Over there, they built these cells, you know, back-to-back, as you've seen, and you can walk the chase, including with a lift, to get up and address issues outside inmate population. So it speeds things up. It's safer. It's just a much better way of doing business, of course, these days. Next slide, please. As you know, they're really big on the use of light and color for multiple reasons, but also focusing on the morale, excuse me, of the staff. I guess I'll get to that in a second. But you probably saw this as well, but the way they went to all their staff and asked about the problems they were having, including clocks and timing and things, safety issues. One of the biggest concerns they had for their staff is when they would go to handcuff inmates through the trade door, that it was cumbersome, and when they opened the door, the inmate had access to the staff physically to assault them. So they moved those trade doors over to the side on every cell there, and then they were able to put these loops outside the door, so there can be a tether put there that minimizes the risk to the staff. They also realized, excuse me, even once that's done, there's still an awkward period of them trying to shuffle the inmate with the door. So in about some of the doors, at the very bottom, they put a separate leg shackle so they could address that problem as well. Just very forward-thinking. Again, I don't know if we'll do all of these things or some of these things, but just great things for us to think about for the safety and the staff and the inmates. Next slide, please. Again, they're big on the morale there, which I love. The box on the left, it seems very simple, but it's the last chance box, they call it. If an officer on the street has missed something on a suspect's body, paraphernalia, drugs, a weapon, anything, they come in, they're searched again, and it's missed again, and they are able to sit in the little waiting area they have there before their process. This box says, "This is your last chance to dump contraband. You can put it in this box with no repercussions. You can drop the drugs, the guns, knives, whatever you have. Put it in this box for safety. If you get inside the facility, you'll be charged with a felony because you knew better and you have it on you." So this is your chance to avoid trouble. Simple concept. It makes total sense. And then again, the wellness center, the way they built it for the staff to work out, and all the way down to where the yoga was protected in the corner because of issues with males and females. They created separate staff dining areas for the staff to break bread together and hang out and build morale. They built an outdoor area for the staff to eat that's open to the sky. They put oversized lockers in the locker room for all the staff, including with chargers for their batteries and their cell phones, and just all the things that people today kind of expect to have, let alone should have. Excuse me. The clocks, again, was a big, I think we talked before, but one of the biggest problems they asked the staff about was inmates were driving them crazy asking what time it was, so they put clocks everywhere. Again, it's a very simple fix, and it made the staff so much happier and inmates happier. Next slide, please. So two weeks ago, we said we went down to Steel Cell North America, who actually manufactures the pre-made cells. Excuse me. I was thinking yesterday, it's not really sexy or exciting to talk about steel cells or steel doors or locks, toilet flushers, water management. Excuse me. Nothing really glamorous about these things, but I get excited about it because it's hugely making progress for us and the way we're learning about doing things. Steel Cell was fantastic, the way they do business, the way they're growing. I was, I'm going to talk about this again a couple more times, with more manufacturers and facilities, but the cleanliness, the staff who stop and stand high to us, asking how we're doing, it was a very positive place to be and to see the way they do business and how they're growing. Steel Cell is currently doing over 2,000 cells, or yeah, I think it was 4,000 beds for the Westville DOC facility that's being built up in northern Indiana. So they, I had a picture of my stuff, but they have a dry erase board where they can stack up to about 1,500 cells in this new facility built to store them, which also then allows the construction to run on time because the cells are ready to go. You don't have to wait on the weather, you don't have to wait on the masonry work or things like that. So something for us to consider. Next slide, please. And I'll kind of get ahead of myself. But Steel Cell, Titan Door, who's coming up soon, and also Willoughby, who we've spoke to before, they all work hand-in-hand. They've kind of formed this kind of dream team to do it all in one if they can and also serve each other's service needs. As you see here on the left, those are pre-made cells already done, waiting to be shipped out. The ones on the right, the dark gray, that's the front of the cell that's not been primed or anything yet. The left is the backside, and the reason I put this in here is because it's actually set up almost the way they go into facilities with the chase down through there again, where that would be the back of two cells traditionally. And then our maintenance people can serve the water, the electrical needs, the lights, change the light bulbs and things without going inside the cell block and shutting it down. The right side there is a brand-new storage facility they have, again, can hold its, they have a couple of those, but that, on the right there, those are triple stacked. They don't normally go that high. They don't go too high, but it just, the giant warehouse they have and the amount of stuff they're producing is very impressive. Next, please. Titan Steel Door, we toured the next day. They're also in Georgia. They, I always tell people, I can't tell you exactly how these doors are made. Again, I don't understand the difference between rolled steel and, but the way they explained it and the way that our people who know the technical insight on those kind of things, super impressive again. They work hand-in-hand with Steel Cell. Scott Carnegie, the architect, has dealt with them many, many times. The products they were manufacturing are impressive. Their knowledge of both steel cell doors, or steel cell cells, and then also their doors and Willoughby products, it was top-notch. Again, the confidence they build, the cleanliness, they're, it was impressive. Again, I have to give David Gardner kudos because they were talking about one of their products is how they changed the way the food trade doors built again. It's a whole new way of doing business. And David questioned the way they did that, and they paused for a second, thought about it, and they said, "We need to go reevaluate a couple of things and make sure that we're doing it the way you're saying because we never thought about that." So even being there to watch David interact with these guys was super impressive. Next slide, please. And if you could, this is a video, if you could click on that for me. Again, not super exciting, but it shows that the technology they are using to cut the precision of the doors. They had a giant warehouse where they're also cutting the steel, then they had sanders and belts. They paint. They do all the things to get it ready for the locking mechanisms that also fit the steel cells that are being produced a couple hours down the road. They do welding, a lot of welding there. Next slide, please. Willoughby is out of Indianapolis, and they've been around for a really long time. A common theme we heard on these tours over those couple of weeks were how they all worked together. All three of those companies worked together to produce the final product from the toilets and the plumbing all the way to the door, to the actual cell, the layout, the, again, I think I have a picture somewhere, but they have a step in the wall to get up to the second bunk, the anti-ligature stuff they build into every cell, the roundness of everything, the shower inside. You can go with or without. They just offer all the different options. Next slide, please. This is probably the most boring picture in the history of the world, but I put it in here because what I hear over and over again from David Gardner is the companies that we had bought products from 10 to 30 years ago, one, quit helping us service them, and two, now don't exist anymore, which is why companies like Willoughby jumped in and recreated the wheel for themselves. This was at Willoughby last Friday, and one of the things they mentioned on the tour was just in passing was, "This was created because they're going to start hosting trainings so they can train the trainers." So people like David Gardner can go and learn about the product and then fix it himself. Whereas Brink's products we're using right now that are breaking, Brink's is out of business now, but they did that on purpose. They shut them down, and David couldn't get any sort of help and training or equipment or parts. This company not only is, by the way, that day they helped a schematic of their lock system, which is very complicated, and David said, "I asked for that for six months from the previous company and couldn't even get a response." And the guys, like, you can just take a copy or a picture. That openness was fantastic. It just seems like a great way to do business going forward. So again, boring picture, but super important to me if our people can do the training with them once we have their products, if we go that way. Next, please. The most recent tour was in Hamilton County. Now we're getting closer, and I think some of you might have been there, too, but closer is probably the size and scope of what we're doing. They added on in two phases. They did 125-ish beds, and they built on for another 125 that are coming up soon. They also built a shell for the future growth, which they're very quickly getting into now because of some other things they're moving around outside of the jail that are going to move the other female inmates in now. What, we've learned so much about control centers and glass panels and doors, and, but one of the things that stuck out here was they mentioned they use colors and letters in all the cell blocks because it gets confusing for staff who's been there for 20 straight days, was I in cell block K or L or M, but they can remember it was green or blue or black. So pretty simple concept again, but great things that we should incorporate. Again, color makes sense anyway, so. I think that was the last slide. If you could make sure, but yeah. Any questions I can answer about that super-fast recap of the last couple of months?
[laughing]
And I look forward to, hopefully, if you don't mind, I end it. Every couple of months, I would like to try and do the same. We, you know, yesterday, it all goes so fast, there's so much of it. Like, yesterday, we did the interviews for the construction managers of the three proposals we'd gotten. All great options, all totally different to the way they approached it. So there's, I'd love to come back some point down the road and talk about the things that take place in the next couple of months and the progress we're making as well.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you. I, this is all very exciting to see.
Commissioner Githens?
What was it at the door place, Commissioner Jones, where you talked about the cleanliness, where they, they walked across a surface that captured dust and stuff off the bottom of your shoes? I mean, the meticulousness of things was just amazing.
Super impressive. And the front part of the building, you know, is very pristine and fancy, business-like. And then the funny part is, as you enter the door to go into the warehouse facility where they're doing the actual manual labor and the hard work, they put one of their steel doors on there just because it was symbolic and it made sense. Instead of just a door you open, it's a slider door that they manufacture. And somebody asked, it's like the things for basketball. Before you go in the game, you squeak your feet on and get all the dirt off. They had those set up because the guys from the warehouse come and use the restroom with dirty shoes, and they walk across that every time just to clean it up before they come in.
Yeah. You know, we, we have notebooks of notes as well from our visits to various facilities, and a lot of this is, brings back some of those same concepts that we talked about earlier. I'm glad that all of this is going on, and it's good to bring the public into it. And I think it's important to note that the process, even though we are working through the process of finalizing a site, there are other things that can be done beyond the tours even. And so can you talk a little bit about that for the public, about what your role is working with DLZ beyond the tours? What's going on with that?
Sure. And you mentioned the public, I should have mentioned this, too, but the interviews we did yesterday were open to the public. It was announced they could have come and said, "And listen," it was also recorded for future viewing if the public wants to see topics discussed, questions asked, or proposals that were made. So super-transparent in everything we're doing. You mentioned the things that we're doing right now before the site is picked. Again, Scott Carnegie has done this so many times from DLZ. He makes it easier than I could ever imagine to try and get it done. And Richard Kreider from the county, we've been doing meetings on potential programming coming up because if we are going to include the justice complex, not just the jail, there are things we can start working on now as far as spacing, number of space we might need, how it'll be laid out, things we're not aware of even right now that could be added on. Early when I first started, I did a lot of outreach with the Chamber of Commerce, NAACP. I'm going to forget a bunch of people because I spoke to the probation, Public Defender's Office, the prosecutor, anybody who would have had a stake, I thought, in a justice button, just to ask, "What have we done well for the last 40 years in this jail, but what can we do better in the next jail?" So all that input, I've been trying to keep for ideas. I don't, we can't accomplish all of that, but we can at least get as much as possible. So that's kind of the programming, the ideas, the note-taking going on behind the scenes now is, I mean, I literally got a text, I was standing here waiting from a painter here in town that works on my house that said, "Where's the new jail going to be?" And I took a picture and said, "It's funny you asked that question because I'm standing in this empty room getting ready." So people care. They're asking questions. I'm having coffee with people. I'm getting emails. It's, it's out there. And so people are more than welcome to contact me if they have questions or concerns at my email address or anywhere. So there's a lot going on. It feels like there's a lot of progress, which is great because I'm pretty anxious. I'm not very patient.
Yeah. No, and I think, I just think it's important for the public to understand we're not sitting twiddling our thumbs waiting for a site selection. There's a lot of other work that needs to get done, and we all have to work together to make things happen. It's, you're not making decisions alone. We're not making decisions alone. The council doesn't make decisions alone. We all have to be working together throughout this entire process, and that's how it's going, and that's what we're working through, so.
This week's a great snapshot of that between all of us, the other day, yesterday with the outside entities, and then today we're meeting with you afterwards. It's just ongoing.
All right.
So can I ask one question? With the steel cells, we had looked at one down in Jefferson County, I think it was, where there was just a single foothold to get up to the second bunk. And, okay, so I'm not very tall, but I could not get up into that second bunk with just the single foothold. Did you look at, like, those minute details as you were going through?
So that's a great deterrent for you to stay out of jail because you couldn't have the second bunk. We have to use the terms.
[laughing]
It's funny you bring it up. We're actually north, Jefferson County, or Jeffersonville's on the list of jails to go to. We're actually going this week to Montgomery County as well. Vigo County's coming up to look at all those minute details. Scott Carnegie gave us a physical demonstration last week at Willoughby of that exact topic because I'm impressed by the way everything in there is rounded and smooth and mostly vandalism-proof and very practical, including a hole in the wall for toilet paper holders they can sit in. And somebody showed us, that looks really practical and easy, but it's not. If you stick toilet paper in there, there's nobody to get a hold of it because it's in a hole, a round hole. And Scott showed us the same thing, and there's one foot peg on the wall to that second bunk, and he actually got up there and showed that, like, a second peg might make some sense to get somebody up there a little safer, a little easier.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Brady from probation. Good morning.
Good morning. Sign my name real quick. So I'm the chief probation officer for the Monroe Circuit Court, and I just came to introduce you to our new deputy chief probation officer for the probation department, Anthony Williams. So some people have not heard that our current deputy chief probation officer, Troy Hatfield, is leaving us for another very exciting opportunity for himself. And so we're sad for us, but happy for Troy for his new opportunity. And I was able to promote from within our department. Some of you may have not met Anthony because he's been with us since 2021, when Susan Allen retired as our court alcohol and drug program director. So he was hired from outside, although I've known Anthony since he was a baby probation officer, you know, for a long time. So I let him introduce himself and explain what he's done before he started this job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning. So my background, just to kind of fill you in, is I've been a probation officer for 21 years this year. All that time minus when I came to Monroe County in 2021 was with Marion County. And I've done every role that you could imagine in Marion County, from just a standard probation officer to supervisor to running their court alcohol and drug program for six years prior to coming to Monroe County. So I'm very excited about this opportunity, nervous about filling Troy's shoes, as you can know, but I promise to do a great job.
I bet you will. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, and thank you, Ms. Brady, for bringing him here today, too. And yeah, we've worked with you, and it's going to be exciting. I'm sure there's, you know, the effect of drinking from a fire hose right now for you, but you'll be great.
It's a, it's going to be a transition for sure. Troy's been here a long time.
Yeah.
And he does a lot of different things, but Anthony's learning. We are having some overlap with Troy. Troy has also agreed that with the new job he has, he works from home, so he's going to be working some part-time hours with us to help train Anthony because not only does Anthony have to learn Troy's job, he's going to have to train the next court alcohol and drug program director, and that is not an easy job either. So I'm looking forward to working with you. So you'll probably see Anthony here at a lot of these meetings instead of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good seeing you. Congratulations. All right. Is there any other department that has an update for us? Oh, Mr. Bayton. Hello. This is GIs coordinator John Bayton.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm going to sign in. I'm just giving a quick update on the Monroe County broadband challenge. This ended officially on Sunday. Huzzah. It was a challenge, to say the least, and very interesting. It was a fun project to be on. It was a very collaborative project, so I want to kind of highlight that, that it was a collaborative effort between the Commissioners, the surveyor's office, and TSC as well, with getting everything up and running and functioning. As, as a lot of surveys kind of reflect, turnout was low or lower maybe than we expected. So we had 224 submissions. Of those, 58 of them were eligible. We have 28 that have passed initial review. We have 26 that are under review, and we have three that were rejected from the Indiana broadband office. So we're basically waiting now to see kind of what happens. I'm really kind of curious what numbers we're going to see from the rest of the state for this and from different, you know, municipalities and things like that. It was, I, again, I feel very bad for folks in the broadband office. I've been in touch with them. They are crazy overworked right now, and so I'll keep you guys updated as we hear back about these submissions and all the participants, so.
Yeah.
And I will say, these numbers, too, are only reflective of people who actually typed data into the survey. So I'm assuming, well, actually, I know that a lot of other people went on, saw that the broadband speeds were much higher than 100 megabits per second, and they didn't fill that data out, which is actually really good for me because I didn't have to go through all that data.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. No, that's, that is really, and I do, I do want to thank you for all your hard work. I mean, you explained it well to the public. I think the state set this up badly, honestly. They hired a consultant who decided that this is how we're going to figure this out, and, and it was daunting for a lot of people. And, but I know that the folks who did speak with you by phone or email were all very complimentary, and thank you for, for that kind of attention to detail is what it took. So really appreciate all your hard work on making this happen. I think it is unfortunate that the state set it up this way. And I will note for the public that there's, there are a lot of additional broadband sites that were marked as red, meaning you, we know you don't have service. So this is really just those folks who, who are being told they have service but are challenging that fact. It's not fast enough. It's, so, so I think it's important to note that. This doesn't mean there are only 220 homes in Monroe County that don't have broadband. What it means is there are 220 people who finished the survey who have broadband or think they have internet at a certain speed, but they're not receiving that service. And, and it's not just these 220 addresses now because now, hopefully, if it passes through the challenge into the state, the state is supposed to be looking at the area. So your neighborhood, the apartment block, whatever it might be, based on one challenge coming back. So it'll be helpful, and it'll have, I think, an exponential impact.
Yeah, that's, that's the hope.
Yeah, yeah. But thank you so much for all your hard work on this. Do you, do you all have any questions for us?
I have one. I want to know how dispersed the different locations were around the county.
That's a, that's a great question, and I think that would be a really cool, like, dashboard or map that I could put out. Right now, I just have the addresses, and so I do know that we had quite a few from the city, quite a few in the county as well. The challenge is that we had 224 submissions, and there, some of them would be people submitting data saying that they had 900 megabits per second, right? So that shows up as data still. So I've got to do some data filtering and cleanup, but that'll, that'll be something I can present at another update because it would be interesting to see that. That's the spatial component, right?
Yeah. You probably have it in your head already, what that map will look like.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Yes. Thank you. All right. Any other updates from staff? Okay. We will now move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity to speak on items that are not on our agenda. We do ask that speakers limit themselves to three minutes per person, and we will also take comments via Teams. So if you are on Teams, raise your hand, but we'll start with Ms. Pearl. Good morning.
Good morning. Great to see you. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We work to diversify jobs across the community and create great wages. I'm here to share a couple of resources, both for you and your constituents and others in the community today. We recently published an article on the Herald Times, which is available online, about a lot of job opportunities that are open across the community right now, in everything from healthcare and life sciences to advanced manufacturing, technology innovation, defense, entrepreneurship, and education and more. So if you know someone who is graduating, who is maybe looking for a better job and trying to upskill, there is a lot of opportunity right now, and so we encourage you to take a look at that article in the Herald Times. We'll also post it on our LinkedIn and share it with anyone you know. Also, I'm here to share a new resource, and I'll drop off some hard copies for you, but this is also available on our website, BloomingtonEDC.com, under the news section. And this is a guide to employment and navigating transition. We developed it actually in response to the recent Catalent layoffs. It worked with many partners across the community. Thank you to Commissioners. Thank you to Angie Purdy for also consulting on that as well. But it includes everything from access to emergency resources if individuals need financial and emotional support, contacts for work won and unemployment. It includes our article I mentioned, which is tabbed in here, upscaling opportunities. There's funding opportunities to upscale, and then other guidance on hitting the job market. So please take a look at this. It's a living document. We're hoping to improve it. So if you see anything that's missing, let us know, as well as members of the public as well. And that is available on our website and on LinkedIn. So thank you for helping us spread the word.
Thank you so much.
I think that last evening when I was talking with Ms. Pearl, you indicated that there were something like 900 job openings in Monroe County right now.
That was our eyeball, when we eyeballed it. And it was, those were jobs that are everything from part-time and seasonal up to, you know, full-time at all levels and all skills. So there really is a lot of opportunity out there. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, distinguished staff. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and a Monroe County resident. I want to thank everybody who attended last night our Elect Connect event at the Upland Brewery Woodshop. Our hats off goes to candidates who put themselves on the line and run for office. The Chamber has great respect for those who do this, knock on doors, work to improve both the community, the state, and our country. We can't say enough about that. We really do appreciate all the work that goes into that, and of course, our elected officials here. We might disagree on certain issues, but we never ever question the commitment to the community in doing a better job. Quick plug, we at the Chamber are doing our first Valor Awards on May 8th. That is a Wednesday luncheon at the Monroe Convention Center. We're going to be honoring five law enforcement agencies, three fire departments, and the dispatch unit that is a shared between the county and the city. This is a great opportunity for us to really show our support for a lot of these agencies who we see day in and day out trying to make our streets safe, who take those emergency calls, and, you know, and the dispatch people who I think get unrecognized on the work that they do. I've toured that facility and been on some of those calls. I, I could never do that sort of work. So this is a great opportunity for us and the community to, to show support for all of these agencies. So we're looking forward to that. Again, that's Wednesday, May 8th. That's just after Election Day, so we can just sort of exhale after, after, after that, after that day. So we look forward to seeing all of you there on May 8th. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer item for public comment, items not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll come to our next agenda item, please. Item five.
Move approval of the minutes from April 10th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
The correction I had was already taken care of.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 10th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, since accounts payable April 17th, 2024, and payroll for April 19th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have our Auditor, Ms. Gregory, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for April 17th, 2024 totals $10,619,456.50. That includes both emergency claims and adjustments. And then the payroll docket for April 19th, 2024 totals $2,213,54. And that includes both indirect and direct costs.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't have any either. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket, accounts payable April 17th, 2024, and payroll April 19th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. I will note for the record that we have received reports from the Treasurer for March 2024 and Ways and Measures, March 16th, April 15th, 2024. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-09, Emergency Management and Highway Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory is going to tell us about this, I believe?
Yes, good morning again. This resolution is actually just to retire the highway infrastructure, so everything has been adjusted. If you'll remember, this was on the agenda for the last meeting we tabled today to make that adjustment. So we're just retiring the 2023 highway infrastructure that is no longer in service.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
This all makes sense with the asset management policy. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-09 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of Sanborn Map Company, Inc., Agreement for Ortho Imagery. Fund names, cumulative bridge reassessment and cumulative capital. Fund numbers 1135, 1224, and 1138, in a total amount of $117,395. And I will note for the record that that is broken down three different ways for equivalent amounts between highway, the assessor, and our technical services department.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Surveyor Enright Randolph here. Good morning.
Morning. Morning, and nice to be here today. This agreement is pretty straightforward. Every four years, we do ortho imagery acquisition and we get three-inch resolution. So this will be for that agreement that the company, Sanborn, conducts the service. It goes through the state, and this meets, meets the special purchasing procedures that are required. And that's about it. I'm here for any questions. Oh, I do want to also say that this, again, you know, shows that collaborative effort of doing this as a county unit where there's three different entities that are paying for this, and then Dr. Bayton, our GIs Coordinator, will be helping with some of getting access to this data as well as the GIs Coordinator. So it, it takes a small village to do some of these things, and I'm really excited to be here. Any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I seem to remember having seen this before.
Yeah. Now, it is important to note that this is being divided three ways, and there, there are so many uses for this, and the three-inch resolution is really, really a great addition. So it's, it's worth doing. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Sanborn Map Company, Inc., Agreement for Ortho Imagery signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item, please.
Move approval of MetLife Contract Amendment. Fund name, self-insurance, fund number 4700, and the amount varies.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. E, tell us all about this one.
All right, so hopefully, this is our last amendment to our MetLife contract. So we've talked previously about how we're sort of working through some issues, and there was an employee that was getting a crown. And in my conversations with that employee, we realized that the coverage wasn't including the porcelain material for that crown, and it had been included in our dental, or our previous dental contract. So MetLife is working with us to add that in there, cover it at the same level it was covered before, and so we just need this signed so we can put that in place.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, just thank you for being on top of this.
Yep, we're trying.
Commissioner Giffens?
You make the complicated seem simple for us, so thank you very much. I know that you have to get down in the weeds on things.
Yeah, we, yeah. It's been a process, but we're, I think we've got it all figured out, yeah.
And I, and I just think, you know, that employee, although sadly dealing with that had to deal with, is probably really grateful that you took the time to, to be focused and pay attention to what they needed and assisted them so well. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and I think one of the things I would like to mention is just when employees bring that to us, it may be an issue that it seems like varies particular to them, but it does impact other employees, and so the more we know and can work through those things, the better it is for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. Thank you for all your hard work. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the MetLife Contract Amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please. Thank you.
Move approval of the Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division of Fish and Wildlife Grant. Fund name, Stormwater, fund number 1197, and a grant amount of $25,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Thetonia here, our MS4 Coordinator.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Kelsey Thetonia, MS4 Coordinator with the Highway Department. So this grant agreement is for two log jam removal projects on Bremets Creek. The total award is $25,000, which will pay close to 80% of the total project cost for the two log jam removals. Happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, just that people need to realize that log jams can really become a major problem. They cause a lot of flooding and, and it's something not to just ignore.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
We've, we've seen pictures of this particular log jam in, in Stormwater Board meetings, so I'm glad that you were able to secure this grant to lower the cost to the county residents.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, really good work. Appreciate the, appreciate the effort. Is there any timing issue with getting this removed related to probably rainfall or anything like that? Is there?
The biggest thing we want to make sure is that the ground isn't wet, because we will be working directly from the stream bank. So we did this last year. We completed it in May, but that was an issue where we had to get in through a cropped field before they planted. We don't have that issue this year, but we want to make sure that the ground is dry. If not, we will be using mats or plywood or something to make sure the heavy equipment doesn't rut the ground. And we have an erosion control plan to make sure that we don't cause any issues. We want to make sure that it's dry enough so that it goes easily.
Yeah, good. Thank you so much. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Natural Resources Division of Fish and Wildlife Grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item.
Move approval of Award 2024 Community Crossing Grant Paving Projects to Milestone Contractors, LP. Fund name, Rainy Day. Fund number 1186, in an amount, and I'm going to gasp here, in an amount of $2,769,356.50.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, please tell us about this.
Good morning. So we opened bids publicly on March 27th. There were two bids received, ENB paving and Milestone. Milestone was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder. The paving projects are the roads that we had submitted in the 2024 Community Crossing Grant Program. That was awarded on April 10th, 2024. I'll be bringing that contract I just received yesterday next Wednesday for the Commissioners to approve. The Monroe County was awarded the max amount of 1.5 million, and the match for this comes out of the Rainy Day Fund that the Council has appropriated. The roads that are listed in the project area that will be completed in 2024 is Mount Pleasant Road, Monroe Dam Road, Valley Mission Road, Sewell Road, Rockport Road, Bremets Creek Road, Bram Creek Road, Popcorn Road, Vernal Pike, Chambers Pike, Zeig's Road, Woodland Road, Oak Ridge Road, and then Shelburne Woods Subdivision, which would also include Andover Court, Brewster Court, Bristol Drive, Chatham Drive, Foxway Drive, Liverpool Lane, Manchester Court, Shelburne Drive, Trenton Overlook, Winterberry Court, and Yorkshire Court. I want to thank our crews that's worked really hard to get all of these roads ready. We put this out to bid early, so in anticipation of this award. We, once we receive it, we can move forward. Our crews have been working diligently to get the roads ready through ditching, pipe replacements, tree removal, brush cutting, so we're ready to go. It's being awarded, so we're kind of ahead of the game, and we couldn't have done that with all of our crews and staff at the Highway Garage, so.
Great planning. Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, first of all, I'm glad you got the trees cut before April 1st, because we all know that we have to protect our bats. But also, I want to thank the County Council for making the funding available for this match, because otherwise, we, we couldn't do nearly this amount of paving, and we know that there are roads in the county that need this work. So kudos to them and kudos to you for going to them for this allocation.
Commissioner Jones?
Just congratulations on, once again, successfully getting this grant, and I also would like to thank the County Council for dipping into their Rainy Day Fund to make this possible.
Yeah, it's, it's really excellent. And these are roads where I've been on some of them recently and thought, I wonder where they are on the?
The list.
The previous list. I think the most recent one was Vernal Pike. But, so on, for Vernal Pike, you're going to wait until the State Road 48, no?
So being able to move forward with this, since we are awarding this today, so State Road 48 is going to be closed May 1st through August 1st for a bridge replacement through NDOT. The unofficial detour route is Vernal Pike to Ord Road. Those are two roads that we had on our list, one of them being in the community crossing. So actually, Ord Road is going to be paved tomorrow. We worked it out with Milestone, they're going to pave that portion of Vernal Pike next week, so we can beat the May 1st deadline, and then NDOT can come in, videotape the roads, any damage that is done to the roads, then it'll fall on their responsibility. We felt that this was the best way to handle that crunch time, and then that, that way it keeps our road in, in good condition after the bridge replacement.
That's excellent planning. My gosh, so smart, so smart. So grateful that you thought of this. Yeah, it is, it's going to be a little, a little busy on the West Side this summer.
Yes, because I know there's also a bridge replacement scheduled for State Road 45 that is also this summer. So on, so there'll be detour routes for there. We haven't finalized all of that at this time, so.
Keep us posted. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's see if there are, there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of awarding the 2024 Community Crossing Grant Paving Projects to Milestone Contractors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordnance 2024-19, amend Monroe County Personnel Policy, adding flex time bank for exempt employees.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you be talking about this today?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And I hope people can hear me. And this was approved at the work session last week, however, it wasn't in an ordinance form, which is what we require when we amend our, our personnel policy. I think I'm going to start with the reason for it and then explain what this actually does, because I think it flows better. As a public entity, as a county government, we are to comply with the Fair Labor Standards Act, but we're also required to comply with state law, which for exempt employees is a little awkward situation, because there are competing interests with exempt employees and having their jobs, their, their work product defined what their schedule is, and the, and the state rules against, you know, ghost employment and anti-fraudulent behavior. So we've got a little bit of awkwardness between there that doesn't apply to private businesses. And so what we've seen, particularly in the last three or four years, but I can tell you, I've seen it for 15 to 20, or not 20 yet, but 15 years. When an exempt employee begins work here that has been used to the private sector rules, there's always a long conversation about timesheets and why those things work the way they do, and it's because the private entities don't have to deal with that competing ideas. And then also, whenever we get a newly elected official, particularly in those situations, but really when any exempt employee comes on board, this could happen, is a lot of times there's a change in philosophy. is a lot of times, there's a change in philosophies and programmings that require their newly hired exempt employee to start having to do a lot of work based upfront. And then, given our personnel policy, a lot of the benefit times and things like that don't really kick in for six months or really, you get a week after six months and two after a year. But, you know, they're working a lot of front-ended hours. So what this policy does is it sets up a separate bank that has, that lasts for a year. So where if an exempt employee say, week one, I worked 60 hours because there's a lawsuit or there's a lot of meetings or something like that, but I still have a lot of work to do at the end of that pay period, I would end up getting a, or any exempt employee would get a bank of time that I could use throughout the course of the year to kind of match the spirit of, hey, we're setting your salary in accordance with our expectation of this many hours worked, that I'm still assured to work those hours, but they can be divvied up in a greater period than a two-week flex period of time. So that's kind of the philosophy behind this. This does have a reset date of April 1st, which is different than what I originally thought would be a great time to just do it at the end of the year. But we learned through, as we looked at the, when people would have earned this, that fourth quarter is when a lot of the exempt employees will earn kind of extra time. So we didn't want them to work the holidays and then automatically lose that extra time because they were covering for other staff. So that's really the one unusual thing about this is, in my mind, the timing of when that occurs in April 1st. You know, there's always going to be a reason why, hey, it would have been better to choose a different day. Just workflow across the organization as large as ours. But April 1st seems to be one that's reasonable in light of when people generally earn that time.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, it seemed very straightforward. And this was explained last week by Molly Turner-King as well. So, yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense. Thank you for working on this. I know it's not always easy to put into words what the intentions are, but I think you managed to do it. So let's see if there's any public comment on this. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill.
Deja vu, I'm back. Just very, very quickly. I just wanted to come and, again, personally thank a lot of people in this room. You know, we kind of started discussing this idea with Angie and Molly and Jeff. And they all three kind of grabbed the bull by the horns and wrestled it to the ground and really put their minds to think about how this could actually be written, implemented. And I mean, it was an evolution, for sure. But then, you know, then the Commissioners had to lay their ear to it and understand that concept and, in keeping with, you know, what's best for our employees. I much, much appreciate it because there's, there's three people in our jail in particular. I'm talking about our captains that this affects. That, you know, they're kind of the tip of the spear every day supervising that, making things run smoothly and making sure that what we're doing there is best for our residents. So this really, really affects them. And they've been watching this and asking me questions almost weekly. And I've assured them that this group of people had their back, and you're proving that today. And it's much, much appreciated.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That's good. Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none. I have to get back to the right page. All those in favor of approving Ordnance 2024-19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. We don't have any appointments today. I've got a few announcements. Just a reminder, especially as we're expecting some stormy weather, that folks should sign up for the Resident Alert System. Go to co.mone road on IM.us. Click on the megaphone and sign up for free weather alerts and other emergency alerts right to your phone, email, or to your regular phone. There are blood drives scheduled with Ivy Tech and Red Cross Thursday, May 9th, 1 to 6. Friday, May 10th, 10 to 2. And this is at Shreve Hall at Ivy Tech. Go to redcross.org to make an appointment. Early voting continues at 302 South Walnut, AKA the old Napa Building, right across from the bus station, Third and Walnut. And in general, early voting runs 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. There are two Saturdays where there will be 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM voting opportunities. And that is April 27th and May 4th. On May 6th, the early voting center will be open from 8:00 AM to noon. Obviously, Election Day is May 7th. We have, we continue to have additional funds available for rural housing repair. If you are low or moderate income